Oh, yeah. Damn, this is... Honey, this whole camera is hot damn.
Please fix up some...
Well, I have a microphone. I'm gonna hand it to people.
Oh, okay.
Just needed to back it up a little bit.
Okay, is that better, Clark? Hot? Okay. So, thank you all for coming. This wasn't what I thought I was going to be doing in the last few weeks of my whatever, my village presidency, but the need is here, so I guess I am enjoying it. My part is rather short and sweet. Casey is from Ellers, our financial roots. I hope I just touched on them. And so he will get more into the weeds as far as the money and how things end up the way they did.
You might call me in order?
Oh, I guess so. Thanks. Okay, so I will call him in the board meeting, special board meeting for this year day, Wednesday, March, well, to order. Bob?
Here.
Gorsegnar?
Present.
Henderski?
Here.
Petruska?
Here.
Smith? Tucker? Tyles? Weiss?
Here.
Sometimes she forgets to ask, you know. Okay, so, yeah, Casey will explain a lot about how we've gotten to where we've gotten and why. We, you know, for years and years and years have been sitting at budget meetings trying to squeeze pennies into quarters and dollars, and it hasn't worked too well. And he will talk about the limits that we've experienced. So, we do have to be out of here probably by 8:30. Mine won't take anywhere near that long, but we'll take public comment and questions after we're both done. But we do get locked out, I guess, at 9 o'clock, so we have to take everything apart. So here we are, Public Safety Referendum for 2025. Any meeting that I've attended, I hear the same thing from large and small communities. Most of what I have contact with have been communities from Jefferson County, but in December I had an opportunity, they invited folks who represent us at the state level. And their comment was, "Yeah, we're hearing every, we hear this every place we go in the state, that, you know, we can't afford this." And so that's pretty much where it is. So budgets of large and small communities throughout Wisconsin are challenged by not only the cost of public safety, but that's the more immediate issue. But road building, anything that costs significant dollars, everybody's got the same problem. Hellmira's not a wall. Our geographic location doesn't lend itself easily to, hey, we'll just join with somebody who's five miles away. They're having problems too. We don't have anybody within the county or of any size that is easy to join with. And so, you know, it's kind of a predicament. It's nice living among the Kettlemore Rainforest areas, but that doesn't do a lot to help our tax situation. So here we are. The cost of readiness is what's expensive. You know, if we knew that there was gonna be a fire like a few weeks ago on a Friday night at whatever time it was, and that's when we needed people, that would work, but or would work better. But that's not the case. We have to be ready for emergencies, you know, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And the mutual aid that's available is pretty much based on our department's ability to provide mutual aid to others. You know, if we can provide trucks and people to help them fight their fires or respond in whatever urgencies, they are more willing to come our way. So it's not like we can just rely on mutual aid to come if we don't have our own sustainable group. Okay. So the other thing that many people don't realize, beyond the emergencies that we all appreciate having a response to, having a local fire department can help to have lower insurance costs. There's what's called an ISO rating. Insurance Services Office gives a rating. We've recently changed from a five to a four, which is a move in the right direction. And I have asked what that means or what it does. And it's pretty much up to the insurance companies to handle it the way they want. Some won't insure you if you have a rating of whatever. The, you know, again, the lower number is better, but some, you know, they put additional charges on or reduce your charges depending upon your ISO rating, but it's not a standard anything. It's pretty much company by company that uses it in their own way. Okay, so this is just more about the ISO rating, but it does assess the ability of the fire department to protect the community from fires based on factors like staffing, equipment, training, the water supply, and response time. It goes from one to, which is an excellent score, up to 10, not meeting the minimum standards. And, you know, the fire supply, I mean, that's, we do have a good fire system here, and so that's not an issue, but staffing and training and all of that is. Okay, and besides that, you know, we say, well, it's Hellmira. How many fires do we have? All again, it's that readiness cost, but there are also mandates from the state of Wisconsin. You know, they don't sort you out and say, well, you know, you've got this size community, so you have to do this, or your fire department has to look like this. They have levels that dictate the hours of required initial training and ongoing training. Well, I think I moved it. Okay. They also have a makeup of acceptable response crews for fire and EMS. And they have mandates for replacement, a timeline for equipment and protective gear to keep our firefighters safe and our public safety folks, the police officers, their bulletproof vests don't last forever. There's just a lifetime for those things. And, you know, those kinds of things, you sit and shake your head and go, well, you know, how often do we? It's not like ours are out of the barn every day, the fire trucks, but it doesn't seem to matter. There are mandates as far as replacement and the performance of that equipment. You'll often see them testing hoses and the equipment and the pumps and the whole deal on the fire trucks. So, that kind of stuff, again, it helps keep us safe and, you know, ensure a response, and it helps keep the firefighters, if they'd have to enter a burning building, there have, you know, there can't be one person coming with a hose. They need to be kept safe as well. And again, as is the case throughout the employment industry, the pool of qualified employees is smaller than it once was. We compete with other larger communities for the same employees, so that means we have to have competitive wages to retain those folks. I was speaking with a guy who has a public safety department. He's one of the deputy chiefs in Ashwabanon. And he said, "Yeah, you know, we used to get 60 applications, and now if we get a handful, we're lucky." So that's just kind of the nature of the beast. One thing I want to mention, the wording on the referendum refers to an ongoing amount, okay? It does not mean we're going to do this every year. That's not the case. We've, we've got a base level, let's say it's here, and we can, you know, every year you can go up the cost of net new construction or whatever magic number the state allows. And that hasn't been enough to keep up with the expenses, as Casey will show us in his presentation. So what we're gonna do is take one jump, if the referendum is approved, of this $350,000 amount, and then that will become the new base, okay? And pay for what we need, mostly staffing, and then, you know, any increase will be based on that. It's not that we're going to jump 350,000 year after year. It's a one jump, and then it stays there. Does that make sense? Okay. So it's not additional money every year, not that amount. So we would appreciate if your ballot looked like that on April 1st. I even didn't put blocks in, I used ovals, so. Okay, so I think we'll let Casey do his presentation, and then we'll take all the questions at the end.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it. So as Kathy mentioned, my name is Casey Griffiths, and I'm a senior financial specialist with Ellers. Ellers is the village's financial advisor. So what they've asked us to do in that capacity is review revenue options based on their budgetary needs, and then also to assist in examining what the budgetary tax impacts would be with increasing the village's allowable levy through a referendum. We did this through a series of meetings, December and January, so what we're gonna do tonight is kind of go through the financial side of things. So I'm really just talking about financial. I'm not talking about need, necessity, all those other things, policy decisions. That's the village board's decision. They've just asked us to run the numbers, basically. So we'll go through that, allow some time for questions related to the financials. But what we want to do first off is kind of talk about kind of how we got here in this, in this scenario. So we're having to go through some boring stuff, but this is basically the methodology for municipal budgeting. So what we really need to do when we start looking at budgets is, you know, understanding the limits of what is allowable for the village to levy in terms of property taxes. So first you have to know what the allowable levy is. And here what's shown is a portion of the Department of Revenue's levy limit worksheet. So every municipality in the state's required to file a levy limit worksheet in order to make sure that they're in compliance with the levy limit law, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But basically what that is, is you know, if you, when you fill this out, you look at the empty levy limit worksheet, you know what the allowable numbers are, you make adjustments, which we'll talk about in a minute, what those adjustments are, and then what the levy need is. So, or what the allowable levy is and what the levy need is. So basically what that, what this, this shows is what the allowable levy is, what the levy need will be. This is a slide that shows abated debt. So this is the village's debt payments. So this is general obligation debt payments, the amount that your tax levy supports for your general obligation debt levy, and then also what's being abated by stormwater revenues, wastewater revenues, and water revenues. This is important. The reason we point this out is because that's part of the levy limit calculation. So levy limits in the state of Wisconsin are debt service is not subject to levy limits, so you can take a subtraction on that. And that'll, that'll become more evident as I go on in my presentation. So when you, what you understand the levy need, there's really two ways to look at a budget. And I will say, like, there's not necessarily a magic, you know, reasoning for one of these or the other, and they're actually, in my experience, have been kind of using both approaches. So there's what's called the bottom approach, which is you put together your expenditure needs and then all your non-levy revenue sources. So the village has things outside of property taxes that it gets in revenue. It gets share revenue from the state, it gets fines and forfeitures, you know, for CD tickets, it gets building permits. Those are other revenues that are outside of the tax levy. So once you all, once you know what those are, so we know your expenditures and you know your non-levy revenues, you then fill what that levy need is. Somewhere it's usually between what's allowable, the max and the minimum, and oftentimes what that is, is there's usually a gap that's involved. The top-down approach is a little, is a little different, but somewhat similar, is that you have, you know what your minimum levy is, and you know what your non-levy is, and then you find, you find basically you back in there is what your expenditures will be. Most communities do a combination of both. It's kind of, it's a lot of puzzle pieces that have to be put together to try and figure this out. What we show here in this chart is this is the amount that are levy within your, within your general fund. Now, it does say amount levy for general fund, layers of library, rec, fire, capital, and debt service. So the, the top three ones are with them. I'll, I'll refer to it as your general fund. It's the general village budget, basically. So that's the amount of taxes that are levy for those particular, those respective areas. So as I said, this is, these are the components of the village's levy. So you have your generals or your general operations, you have fire, library, and rec. The villages decided to keep those out. Again, it's still within the same budget, but it's kind of, it's different line items. Your capital, which is your infrastructure, equipment, large items that are purchased on a non-recurring basis, and then your general obligation debt. Out of these four categories, three of these are exempt from levy, or, I'm sorry, three of these are subject to levy limits, one is exempt, meaning that your general obligation debt, there are other limits as to what the village can, can have for its debt, but it's not tied to how much it can levy on taxes. So we've talked a little bit about what levy limits are, and this is levy limits at a glance. So the state has always imposed levy limits, as far back as 2005. The most current iteration of the law goes back to 2011. And basically what that is, is that the prior year's actual levy may not be increased by a percent equal to net new construction in the preceding year, or zero if not. Okay, so what does that mean? Well, net new construction is basically the change in your community's value from one year to the next, so their property values, the total property values, from one year to the next, increasing for new construction or decreasing if there is deconstruction. So basically, if, let's say, $100,000 home is built and you have, you know, a million-dollar, you have a million-dollar property value, you can increase it by that, by that percentage. You can increase it by $100,000. If you take out $100,000, you have to decrease it by that amount. If it's zero, or if it's nothing, then you don't get any increase. There are adjustments though, I will say. There are adjustments that may reduce or increase that allowable levy. So how has the village managed levy limits? So basically, there's really three things that they've done, and this is what most communities in the state do. They annually evaluate your capital plan to, to see what things are needed and potentially issue debt for that. They're claiming the full geo-debt payment for the upcoming budget year to pay debt service, which again, there's a calculation that allows for that debt to be basically, basically used as a way to, to increase the levy capacity, and then also share, state share revenues. Now, that's not something that's, the village was able to do. No village or city was able to do that, but that came from the state. So in 2023, the state, after years of not increasing shared revenues to municipalities, increased that allowable one, and now it's tied to an index. So it varies from year to year, and it's a little bit, but it's not necessarily enough to meet the budget gap for a lot of communities. So we talked a little bit about it, about abated debt, and why are we talking about that? Well, that's because, as I said, there's an adjustment on your allowable levy based on the amount of debt that is, that is essentially claimed to the state. And so as you're paying, as the village pays off debt, those, that, those funds no longer become available to, to do with, to include in the levy limit calculation. So we have, you know, 2029, that's last year for stormwater, so $50,000 of abated debt, again, that, that line item on the levy limit, that allowable decrease or increase in levy will not be available. 2027 is last year for wastewater, and 2025 is last year for water. So the abated debt, as it comes off, paying off the debt, that's great, but obviously there's a negative impact to the levy limit adjustment. So this is where we kind of get into what's the projected levy limit gap, and this is provided to us by the village. So we have, we had a levy, actually a levy limit gap of $176,000 this year, and with the request for, you know, additional funds for different, different operating expenses, it's increased even more to about $500,000. Your total government fund balances have decreased from 2.3 million to 1.2 million from 2018 to 2023. And as I said, the levy limit gap is projected to increase because you're not allow, you're not being able to basically take that, 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 that abated debt discount off of the, off of the, or off of the levy limit worksheet. So there are alternative revenue options. They are very limited. I'm just gonna talk about two this evening, because these two are the ones that don't negatively impact the village's tax levy. So the first is the public fire protection fee. Some people call it the hydrantal fee. I like to call it the public fire protection fee because you're not ready to hydrants. What it is, is basically, it's a charge that every utility in the state is required to have by the Public Service Commission. It's basically their, the Public Service Commission has deemed, in its infinite wisdom, that if you didn't have to have a fire, if you didn't have to have hydrants and everything like that, your, your water system wouldn't need to have as much pressure, wouldn't need to be built to the way that the standards end is. So basically, as a, as a trade-off, there has to be a payment made for fire protection. Oftentimes that is in the levy, but a lot of communities are moving it out of the tax levy, so out of property taxes, and placing it as a charge on their water bills. I think it's roughly about, I think 60% now have gone to that. So that is one option. In order to do that, the village will, and actually the village, I believe, is finally a conventional rate case with the PSC this year, and that will also, that would be included on this one. The other one is a recycling charge. So the state mandates that all communities and, the state mandates that all communities recycling. It's a state requirement in state law. So there is, and the village contracts for that service, there is a special, there is a charge that's currently being levy in the village's tax levy. And so what that is, is that they can move that out and place it as a special, a special charge on the tax bill. So those are two solutions that are non-levy related. Not saying that they won't increase revenues, or they don't impact your overall, what you pay, but those are ways that the villages, those are two ways outside of a referendum that the village has looked at, ways to, ways to bolster revenue. So now we're gonna talk about why we're here, the levy limit referendum. So this is, again, a solution to address the funding gap that exists right now with the, with the village's budget. So basically, this is to seek voter approval and would be implemented in the 2026 budget, so next year. And requires a question to be asked on April. So the village is limited to when it's able to ask that. You're only able to ask that when regularly scheduled elections occur. So this is the only available election this year. That's hence why it's on the April, this April ballot. So if it's approved, as Kathy mentioned, this will reset the base levy. So it's not a compounding number. That $350,000 is not compounding. It's a reset to increase it to that amount moving forward and annually, as well as being able to collect for net new construction number when that comes up. So as Kathy mentioned, you're not alone. This is just a statistic that's pulled from the Department of Revenue as to the number of levy limit referendums that were approved. So these are either one-time or ongoing. So some communities say, "We're just gonna do it one time, we're just gonna levy for this, that particular year." Most, though, choose to go with an ongoing, ongoing levy limit referendum. So as you can see, starting in 2011, there weren't that many. Going to 2022, there was an explosion in levy limit referendums. Now, what I note on this one is, these are only the levy limit referendums that were approved. Unfortunately, right now, there's not good data tracking municipal referendums in the state as to how many have been asked. I think, I might, I might not, I think I know about, I wanna say 60 or so referendums were 2022, and we have been fielding in our office more calls from municipalities about this. And why is that? Partially because what I've seen in my 15 years in this, in this, in this business is that, if everyone remembers Act 10 in 2011, that removed a lot of restrictions as to, or eliminated a lot of levy or, of bartering capacity for unions. Communities were able to kind of shift cost more onto employees, you know, for things like benefits and things of that nature, and also reducing staff. That sort of, those options have, have run out, basically. So now they're turning to looking at other options to, to raise revenue. So this slide just shows what your net new construction is versus inflation. So the big line here, as you can imagine, this is, this is inflation. So that's what actual inflation was over the last, last 15 years or so. The solid orange line is the village's actual net new construction. And then the dotted lines are the averages. So over this period, the average inflation was 2.57%. The statewide average net new construction, so every community in the state, statewide average net new construction is 1.55%. The village's average was 0.87%. So well, then, let's talk about the, what does this all mean financially if it's approved? So this is what we presented to the village board back in January on levy limit projections. So the very far left column is the actual, so that is what the village's actual levy is, allowable levy is for this, this, this budget year 2025. So that shows an allowable levy of $1.2 million. So the lines that are shown basically are what is calculated to get to your allowable levy, all of those levy limit worksheets I talked about. So the adjustments that are allowed. The estimated one in the middle, that's the estimated budget if nothing were to happen whatsoever, if it just was status quo, just taking the net, the normal, the normal exemptions and all the normal adjustments. So that gets us to a levy of about 2.1, 2.9 million, or about a $75,000 increase from, from this year, from this year to next year. If the levy is, or, I'm sorry, if the referendum is approved, that's on the very far right-hand column. So that is, as you can see, where the blue highlighted square is, that's the $350,000. The allowable levy with that increase to 1.6 million, and you get to $425,000 change from the prior year. And that obviously takes into account all the other adjustments as well. I don't want to dwell too much on this because I really feel, and I'm, my final slide is actually gonna say, if you want to go and calculate what the impact would be, I'll tell you how to do it. I don't necessarily like these two, but this kind of shows what tax impacts would be. The reason I don't like to really go a whole lot on tax impacts is because it's really, you know, everybody's concrete is different, you know, you could throw what their assessed values or whatever. This is just kind of a guide to show you what it's going to be. So this is basically with a projection with no referendum. Part of the reason you see a decrease in the tax rate is because the assessed value increased in 2024. So the, if your assessed value is higher, the proportion of the pie is larger, that means tax rates are lower. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean your taxes go down as a property value. If your, if your value goes up, oftentimes that will increase your taxes. So again, like I said, it's really, really dependent on, you know, on, on your individual situation. So this is the projected tax projection with your referendum. Again, that would increase your tax rate, and that's really the important part, is the 9.25. That's what the tax rate would increase to. And again, I'll tell you how to calculate it if you really, if you really want to do it, take your current year's tax bill and calculate it back out. And then this is the property tax impact summary. So this is basically showing your actual amounts in 2025. Really, the top portion is the one that you want, or, I'm sorry, the, the two numbers are really the same because it's not, the, the line is, it's showing the referendum on the actuals. And then what your projected numbers are, voting no for, for the referendum and what the annual change would be versus if you voted for the referendum, what the annual change would be. It all depends on, on the value, value situation. So as you can see here, you know, you're just looking at anywhere between 239 to 466, depending on the value. And as I said, we'll talk, this is how you calculate it. So what you need to know to calculate is you need to know your assessed value, you need to know your tax rate, so I gave you that. Tax rate's 9, the proposed is 9. So I gave you that tax rate, the proposed is 9.25, current is $6.86. So here is an example of the calculation for, to get your, what the village portion of tax bill would be is your tax rate times your assessed value divided by 1,000. Key thing to understand is this is not including school, tech college, county levies or taxes. It also doesn't account for your first dollar credit, your, and any, any school credit as your, I'm sorry, your, your lottery card, your first dollar credit and any school credit that's available to. Those adjust year to year too. So this is just baseline on what the village would be without any sort of, any sort of additional, additional aids that go into it. So with that, I guess we'll open up to questions.
Can I make a comment? Your visual aids are beautiful, but this happened, the call can't see them.
Okay, sorry. Which one would you like me to go back to?
Well, that's fine. It's over with. If you ever go back to the screen, it moved.
Okay, so, yeah, sorry about that. So if, 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 this is, I think probably what you want to maybe, if you're, if you're interested in how it would affect you, this is really what it will have to, you know, in terms of, in terms of what an estimate. And these are all projections too. That's an important component. We're projecting things out. You know, we won't know what the village's assessed value is, you know, until later this year when those, those numbers are certified. So there's still a little bit of guesswork. So again, caution, this is projections. These are projections.
One thing I thought of, often I will hear people, and not that, you know, those of us who sit behind those little brown signs want to raise taxes by any stretch. We haven't and we've been successful, but we just can't anymore. But, you know, we, I hear people say, well, you know, my electricity at home is going up and my gas, when I, for my car, it's all getting more expensive. But the same thing happens for the village. You know, the street lights pumping stuff to the sewer plant and fueling the vehicles. Yep, we feel that same pain in the village budgets. So, you know, as I said, it's not something we want to do, but we've been kind of boxed in a corner and don't have too many options. Steve?
So you're proposing a 350,000 increase overall. We're not hearing anything about where that 350 is going to be used for or what, or it's just a blob we're throwing at a wall. And maybe where it sticks, it sticks, but we don't know where you're aiming. What are you going to use that 350 for?
So I think my voice carries. If it doesn't, please let me know. I'm Scott and the Public Safety Director. Just so you know, those of you that don't know me, Mike Gartskis, our Fire EMS chief. He's been on board with us for how many months now, Mike?
As soon as last April.
As last April. And Penny Leepak is our sergeant. She is literally more of my financial guru when we put out certain figures. And many of you know her, she handles some of our Facebook responses, which I found to be rather interesting. So I will give you a summary of when we presented this to the board, the very specific things. Number one, I did not address operating costs. There's, I would tell any of you, my office door has always been and is always open. And if you literally want to sit down and go over beans and bullets, I have nothing to hide. I will give you some generic categories of the important ones. But if you want to know what in my tenure, which began in October of 2023, why the changes to the Fire and the Police Department, I can explain those to you. I can explain to you why in 2023, when I came on, I had to make some major changes. Those changes were 100% related to what we could provide to both the town and the village, the contract for the town and the village, and what in all honesty, we were not providing. And so all of my actions have been taken in the board. And what we did is we took a look over the last year and said, come 2026, what are operations and what is personnel going to cost us? The referendum for the answer to your question is really personnel related only. So here's the main categories it addresses. We currently run right now, required under our contract. And what, what's really out the door right now is we have, myself and Sergeant Leepak are currently the two patrol officers providing full-time patrol in the village. In 2025, when I came on board, we had to do, in the end of 2023, for 2024, I had to make significant cuts. We had to do that for a lot of reasons. We were 3,700 dollars, 3,700 hours of overtime in 2023, paying public safety officers at a rate of how much per hour?
24 or something at time and a half.
At time and a half. What we did is we brought in full-time firefighter EMTs that are paid 17.50 an hour.
They were 15.
Yeah, they were 15 at that time. So we changed that. We looked at our staffing. Our staffing is one police officer between the hours of 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Why that? We ran public safety officers that acted as police, fire and EMT. But if you had a call where required an ambulance, Penny can sum it up best, but your police car went there, an ambulance went there with an EMT in it, we parked our squad car on the side of the road and we drove you to the hospital. That left no policing in your village.
And no fire.
And no fire. What we've done since then now with our full time is we run two EMTs minimum. Firefighter EMTs, excuse me, that can operate either the engine or the ambulance right away and a police officer with part timers and others. We sometimes have two or three of us on and we can get to calls that are police and are fire EMS. That's the first change that I made. What's happened is we went into 2025's budget and we weren't seeing increases in money. Things got more expensive, equipment broke, operational expenses got higher. I will get into this for anybody that wants the beans and bullets. What broke and what we had to pay for that, that cost us tons of money, things that were cut. What we did is said, we as a department in 2026, what we're asking for the referendum is to give you this. Our employees are working right now for the Fire Department at $17.50 an hour. Go out and look what you get for $17.50, $17.50 an hour at a McDonald's. These are the people that are firefighter and EMT trained, which requires a lot of hours training, certification. The salaries comparable in our area for a firefighter EMT are up to $23 to $27 an hour. It varies. You will get smaller rural departments around $20. So what we did in the referendum is we said, we calculated how we can pay the Palmyra firefighter EMTs $20 an hour. They are not applying for us right now. They are not coming to work for us. So you are not getting applicants Mike interviewed to. Neither of them wanted the job when they heard 17.50. They're not applying for us. We do not have volunteer firefighters anymore. Why? Because we have applications. We literally brought them, I kid you not. Because people that have to become firefighters now, unlike 10 years ago or more when I know Frank and others know our system, a firefighter could get trained in a station, could get certain certifications, they could work out of the station. Maybe they couldn't do mutual aid. It is now required to have advanced levels of training. People that go to that training don't become volunteers. There are exceptions, okay? But in general in Palmyra, we can't get anybody to apply volunteer and we get part timers that'll only work when they're not working at the more expensive fire departments. That is the reality of the beast that I learned about not being a firefighter, only an EMT, when I came on board here. What else do we give you? We estimate that in 2026, we can't get cops to apply right now. We do have a new full-time officer coming on, which isn't available, we slot we have. We have him coming on, it's Paul Blount, for those of you that live in the community. Paul's coming back to us full-time. We are looking at a probably a 4% raise going into 2026. What's that comparable to? Running comparables of other police departments. It's about 8% going up. Our police officers got a raise when I came on that brought them back to the lowest rate paid to most of the majority of the communities in Jefferson County. They are at 72 to 74,000 dollars a year. Where I came from in Menominee Falls, you start at about 90 to 100,000 dollars a year and you get a $10,000 sign-on bonus. We don't do any of that here. So we are bringing the pay to the police officers a little bit higher, but it is not by any means what I would say competitive or comparable. Where, there's no increase I've taken this year since I started. Is that important? No, I like to throw that out there just because Kathy's in the room. We're, I'm not looking at anything. The village has done good, we're working hard for it. But I am averaging right now about 120 hour, two week, or two week pay periods. So we're patrolling the streets.
On salary.
On salary with a G, there's no overtime. That's not normal. I'll just tell you that. Being, being honest and if it sounds a little stingy, I'm being honest with you. What else do you get? You get PD coverage right now from Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. With the 2026 projections, I will be bringing back an additional police officer. We're talking police side right now. That will put us where I was at when I started here in 2023. So those of you that think we're increasing the police department, we're not. We're bringing it back to what I had to cut to get us through 2025. We're going back to where that means we can hopefully have two officers on duty during those hours. Then when I'm working or Penny's working, we look to fluctuate some hours. I do not want to stand here and guarantee you what you'll have in the afternoon or evening shifts. We hope that our part timers and others can work longer hours. I see a need for that. But I am not going to stand up here and tell you with the way things are, what I can get part timers willing to come into, into the village and work. But it is my goal to expand those hours or put some weekends as much as I can. This increase would allow me to do that somewhat. Again, I can get into particulars for those that need to know EMS coverage. So how's that affected? That's the big one. We run right now two EMT firefighters. Quite frankly, we're at the remnants now where everybody is firefighter EMT. We have one EMT only person. The goal with this referendum would be allow us to put four persons on duty 24/7 that are firefighter EMT qualified. Mike, I'm going to let you just touch on that, why that's important. Because what that means, what you all want to know is, is the fire truck coming out the door? Can that fire truck put out a fire? I'm going to let Mike explain that because I think it's important how we operate now, what we've improved on and what this referendum allows us to do. So Mike, if you can just touch on how that works.
Speak up, thank you. Can you hear me about that? Good. So to get a fire engine out the door and to show up to your house to successfully go in and put a fire out, we need two people to go in, two people to stay out. So if the two people inside get in trouble, there's two people to go in and bring them back out. Right now we have two firefighter EMTs that are on duty 24/7. That does not get us a fire truck out the door. Some days we have a part timer there. Right now we only have the ability to have them work 7:00, 8:00 to 7:00 PM because our station currently doesn't allow a third person to stay overnight. We just don't have facilities to do that. What we're looking to do is add those additional two people. We would have to make some changes within the firehouse to make that work. But what that will do is get us the four people that we need on duty so that, it covers a couple of things. If we have an ambulance call that goes out right now, we can get out the door averaging to your house in less than six minutes. If we get that call, most of our transport times are half an hour away to Summit Aurora, which is an hour if you go from door to door and you don't spend any time in between. So that's a whole hour that that ambulance is basically out of service for another call, which does happen from time to time. It's, it happens every day, no it doesn't. But in my opinion, if I was the guy that needed that second ambulance, I'd want the people there to get in the second ambulance and come to my door and help me out. So that also having those extra people there every day affords us the ability to have people on duty for that second request. I just have always said, I would not, I know not the chances of you using it. Fire or EMS are probably very low, especially in a community like us. We average around 350 calls a year. But on the day that you need it, I would want them sitting in the firehouse with the ability to come to my door and come in and help me. You know, it's like an insurance policy. You pay a lot for it. You hope to God you never use it, but when you need it, you're thankful that it's there. So we do rely heavily on mutual aid. It's called a MABIS system. So if we get a call, just like the grasshopper the other night, it required a lot of resources. We don't have a lot of resources, but all ours were there. But we had a call for help. And when we call for help, we hope to God that those people are around and are able to come because a lot of our communities still rely and pay on call or volunteer. Some people are starting to pay folks to sit in their stations now because they're running the same issues we are. Or in the, in turn, when they call for us, we want to have the ability to say, hey, you helped us, we're going to come and help you too. So that affords us to have two people go on a tanker to take them water, two people to go on an ambulance and take, give them mutual aid for EMS and still gives us the ability to keep people in house to make sure that our communities are protected. So that kind of in a nutshell is why we're looking at the four people. I love they have six, 12, you know? But the reality is to get that first engine out there to get to your house, to put water on the fire, to save you from hanging out the window. It, it takes more than two, it just does.
Mike speaks softly, just to reminisce on the fire a couple of few weeks ago. At our once together, I don't know how many of you know this, but we had 20 fire departments respond. 50 pieces of equipment. We had eight of our firefighter EMTs that came in. I can tell you when I started in 2023, I couldn't, I didn't have eight trained firefighters. I had people on the books, but I had three certified firefighters a year and a half ago. That number varied. That was not due to what many of you know in the room, people left. It wasn't that. It's what we had on the books because of what we paid and what we could get. The other day when that fire happened, we saved every structure. Our fire department was in command. They, that mutual aid that Mike talks softly about is the fact that those departments have moved us up on those cards and they respond to us now and we respond to them. And I can tell you, come, come sit, many of you probably sitting here have been firefighters, maybe even in the, in the village or the town. You understand what it means, how many towns and rural communities take passes at responding because those volunteer firefighters, they're at work, they're not available. We've had a rapid increase in response time, people coming in. And lastly is the police. I've heard some questions about policing, do we need it? That is a question for all of you in this community to answer. Okay, I'll just be upfront with you. I'm the police chief and the public safety director. My life's been 36 years as a cop. Okay, my fire expert is here. If you ask me in Palmyra, do you need police? You should know that today Penny handled three or four calls. One of them put her at this high school all day. There's anywhere from four, you can ask the county, I don't want to quote them four, to maybe eight deputies if we're lucky working during the day. What is the response time difference? Ours is about a minute and a half to a police call during those hours during the day. We at least have a car there. If I have a school shooter at this high school, I'm going in the door by myself. That is what police do now. And we're able to get in the door. If you have to wait for county, go ask county how long it might take them to get here. Is it worth having one or two police officers working here? It's a question you all have to answer. I, I don't stand up and BS people, you can check the facts. But we are busy every day. Two comments, I love them, we're in one Facebook post for those of you that honor that. We have too many cops working. We don't have enough cops in town. In one Facebook post, people battle it out. I'm guessing somebody got a ticket and somebody else couldn't get the squad there in a couple of minutes.
Somebody was a convicted felon.
Yeah, somebody was a, folks, the idea is you do have the advantage having us. My goal is to get that strength, help with some of those hours. But I'm not going to lie to you, we're a small community. I am Andy Griffith and we do our best to handle things in-house. We do a lot, a lot of things the sheriff's department, others can't do. But we are not where I came from, Menominee Falls, where I had 12 to 14 officers working. That's not what we are. But our officers are dedicated that are here. The pay they're getting is on the lower end. We're not cheap. I mean, police officers are not $10 an hour employees. I'm not going to tell they are and there's reasons for that. I've been doing a cop funeral over the years. Firefighters are not cheap because of the level of certification and training. If you want to do it, we'll give you the application. I'm not kidding you, I'll bring you on board. With that said, I want, in other areas, there's a half a dozen. Let me just tell you, if you need to know, the training costs more. We have to cover the hours of training. The budgets in the past did not cover the hours of training for full-time firefighters and EMTs. That training is required of part timers as well. Realize in the village of Palmyra, our firefighters, whether they're full-time or part-time, get paid the same hourly rate. The difference is benefits that you have to pay to full timers. What do you get for that? Right now, most of my full timers are working multiple days off to fill our shifts because we can't get people to fill the rosters because of our pay. So what do they do? They're working 72 hours long. They're working minimums of 48s. These questions I will be more than happy to answer for any of you that, if you're a CPA, please come to my office, sit down with me and help me. If you can find a loophole, write a If you can find a loophole, right, I don't have to ask you all for that money. Please come to my office. I'm not a CPA. You should see my chat. So I'm willing to sit down if you have those questions. Other than that, I will leave it to you and the board members and us if we can answer any other specifics for your.
So he rambled on.
That's what I do. That's what Penny's here for.
So basically, it would, what we're at, what the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would cover would be refunding the fourth police officer that we cut out of the budget for twenty twenty-five because we didn't have it filled anyway. Um, it would add two, having two additional people on, so we would have four fire EMS. Those are not, they were not calculated to be full-time employees. We would be looking to have part timers. So we need a bunch more part timers to come in to fill those extra two slots. Um, raising the firefighter wage from seventeen fifty to twenty, which is still way less than it is anywhere else. And then all of the firefighter EMTs that we brought on last year, based on the, the village handbook, would be getting additional vacation. So then we need more hours to backfill that. That's basically, can I answer it?
Math doesn't add up in that when you talk about having to have two firefighters to get a bus out the door.
Okay.
That's eighty hours a week for two guys, but it only covers half the deal when you need twenty-four seven. Times two.
Our, our right.
You're, you're, you're still only half of what you need.
Our office, our firefighter EMTs, if I'm understanding your question correctly, and if I, if I don't have any clarification, they're working forty-eight hours on ninety-six off, the, the current guys. Okay, so to bring, we would, it, we would actually need basically six people, but it's two more positions. Two more twenty-four seven positions. So at, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, times twenty-four hours, times two, it's like nine thousand more hours at twenty dollars an hour. Does that, does that make more sense?
If you want to, literally, I, to make, if you want to see the budget sheet of how it breaks down, I got a multicolored form. I'm sorry to print it out for everybody. But we can, we can tell you exactly how that fills in and, and there's also overtime and other stuff like that that we cut down and, so.
Quick question. So are we still providing services to the town?
Yes.
What is their portion of this?
There is a contract that expires the end of this year. Frank is in the back. You can speak to that from the town. Uh, we will go into contract negotiations once we see whether the referendum passes or not. Um, the fees for that are calculated by bigger, smarter minds than me. But those negotiations are coming that will determine what their portion is with these increases. So if you're asking, do they gotta pay for the increases? Yes, yes, we anticipate. Any contract sign's gonna account for where we have to go up for the services we provide.
And the reason they can't do the calculations until we know if the referendum passes is we don't know to calculate two people or four when we go into their contract negotiations. Make sense?
And personnel, just to be clear, personnel is what we're talking about with this referendum. I haven't asked for a dime for operational expenses. And to tell you that operation, so that's your, your fuel, your equipment, your, your tires. I am in, this, this pasture alone, I was over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in unplanned, unbudgeted equipment things because guess what? Our trucks are old. We had to replay, we had to replace an ambulance, which we did. Um, that's not raising your taxes, but that is a matter the board had to address. Yeah, a cot is fifty-seven thousand dollars for an ambulance. Those expenses, those things work for that. Yes, sir.
I have a question to kind of follow up on her question. So if the town's portion, if you worked that out, say, I'm just gonna throw fifty thousand dollars. That portion, does that offset the three hundred and fifty? In other words, would you have an extra fifty thousand to work with?
I think the short answer to that is, is no. It's gonna help the office a lot, the others. What I, what I would say to that is when we get to the contract, I encourage whether you're from the town or the village, there are open meetings. Those are questions you need to see, those figures. We'll do bigger font on this screen. Because it's, it's a lot of areas and again, it's a negotiation and I am not, uh, Mr. Gorsegner has been having some meetings about that. There is a lot of areas that we need to talk about. That's why when we looked at this referendum, we figured we'll figure all that out. There's, so there's nine categories I have on the sheet. Increases we've received this year, two percent dues, Act one oh two funding, all kinds of other areas that we've worked, the fire chief and others have worked to, more monies coming in in those areas. But those operational costs are increasing every year. So I would tell you, those are things you need to come and look at at the budget meetings, those negotiation meetings, so you can get those answers and ask those questions of these folks up here who look at all that. I'm not trying to blow it off, but it's, it is important, but it's an up and coming thing that has to be looked at.
And for this referendum, it's like, what we're asking for, all of us as taxpayers, this is just covering the village's budget portion. So when we sit there and we look at a budget for next year for fire EMS that would be covering the town, we'll be sharing, okay, this is what it's gonna cost for a fire EMS. And, you know, we'll be talking about Frank and, and we've got, well, we had a drink meeting. And we, uh, Mr. Martins and I had one meeting. We had, we wouldn't have had more, but each of us have had some conflicts. I've had some other ones, but the idea is that we're not gonna really have numbers until after we as voters, taxpayers decide a day for it. If, once, if it fails, anybody who's sitting behind this table, we're gonna have some difficult decisions to make, which are scary.
Part of the.
But, you know, I don't want to do the gloom, but it's just that, I mean, this is gonna give us some breathing. Like we had an hesitation. We had a big cold bill that we just let it go because we didn't, we had starvation people on half. And like two people going on a truck door and had to try to have the three. And all, you know, and then so on and so forth. So it comes down to, you know, it's, there'll be a discussions with the town as far as, you know, what their portions are potentially.
I really quickly go back to Stephanie's question. Um, so the village for just a fire and EMS department, the village levy, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. The town's portion, they're gonna pay us this year two hundred and fifty thousand, one seventy-eight. So it's within a couple thousand dollars. Just, I call it fund eight hundred because that's fire EMS only. It's not police. Their revenues were seven hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. Their expenses were eight hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. So we went into twenty twenty-five a hundred thousand dollars short for just fire and EMS. I just wanted to answer Stephanie's question. You had asked how much the town.
Yeah, thank you.
And the other piece with the referendum, a chunk of that is police, which the town at this point is not contracted with us or service. So, you know, not all of the three hundred and fifty will be impacting the fire EMS side things either.
Maybe somebody could help me with this town, village thing. I've only been here two and a half years. And I really don't understand why these people do this, why y'all doing this. You got seventeen hundred people live in the town and eighteen hundred people live in the village. And you can't come together to be one. You got one fire department, just everybody. I don't understand.
Oh, that's a long story.
I don't think, but this part I don't understand because it doesn't happen that way in other states, not like this. And it's just, it's just like you said, I mean, and this is the second I've been here. Parking taxes gone twice, insurance is gone twice. So the built, the little scale you had there on the board doesn't mean nothing to me about lowering from five to four for insurance companies. So it's all, uh, everything's gone. And then you're hitting us again.
Um, I have a question for you actually. So on the last three of your slides, you have like a small little bullet point. I believe it's your number two. You have that the, uh, twenty twenty, well, you didn't say twenty twenty, but it's the US Census data, the median house, median home is a hundred and ninety-four to two hundred.
Yep.
Um, that's a little bit misleading because if you look at, the whole village was just assessed and I know they said that they haven't been certified yet, right? But even if you take, um, the median home prices and even the median sale prices, they're way more than that. So the four hundred and eighty-five thou, or, I'm sorry, the four hundred and seventy-eight thousand that you guys are saying for the two hundred thousand dollar home assessed value, it's actually gonna be way more than that. It's not gonna be four hundred and seventy-eight.
So that's where I would go back to say, okay, so if you know what the value is of the home or your property, that's where, to calculate that out. These are just projections. That's the best that we can do with that information that we have available too. So again, that's why we're trying to say it's just projections, um, at this point.
Because I mean, all the homes here in Palmyra, for the most part, are probably way over two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. Sorry.
I mean, the, the four hundred and eighty, or seventy-eight that was put out on these like little flyers, it's not gonna be that. It's gonna be way.
Two hundred thousand dollar home.
I know, and most of the homes in Palmyra now have been assessed way over that. By like two times.
I sold my house in twenty eighteen for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It has sold twice since then. It just sold for four hundred and seventy-four.
Exactly. That's why I'm.
But that, but we had to come up with values to figure it out. And then because you can't figure it out for everybody's home, you need to use that or now this calculation now that is to figure out what it's gonna be. Yes, it's gonna be more. But again, that's only the village portion.
What about the new assessed property values? How much is that gonna help the levy if the whole town?
That's a, that's a, that's a, that's way above my game.
That's gonna increase the levy, right?
No, no, no. Your assessed values won't increase your levy. But they said, if your assessed, if the levy increases and your assessed value increases, your tax bill won't increase. Yes, yes. But if.
What he's saying, I think what he's saying is the total, the total value of the property in the village.
If that increases along with this, yes, the taxes won't increase. Correct.
I, I'm an assessor. That revaluation is a completely different number than what, like if you added a deck to your house, if you added a deck to your house directly impacts your taxes. But that revaluation number, they can't, they can't touch that dollar amount to increase their levy. As much as everyone would love to, they can't.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like two percent of net new construction, I think, or even less than that.
Correct.
Cause I've dealt with many municipalities and they're going to fire fees. Um, where they take the fire protection off of the, off your tax bill so you can't write it off. And it's a separate fee and municipalities can raise their levy based off of that fee. And it's happening everywhere.
Yeah, so, yeah, so maybe I should reiterate that point. So let's just say nothing happens, status quo. Value, your value goes up, but that levy remains constant, that total. Basically what it is, is the levy is the total amount of taxes that every parcel in the village pays. Okay, there's a portion. It's proportioned out based on your assessed value. If your value goes up and that levy stays the same, your taxes aren't necessarily, I'm sorry, if your assessed value goes up and the taxes stay the same, your, your values aren't, or your, uh, tax bill is not gonna go up on the village side. Um, now, I can't speak for the county and all those other things because there's a lot of components that go into your tax bill. But if it is a component where levy increases and values increase, then tax bills will increase. If it's levy increases and ta, and assessed value stays relatively the same, your taxes will increase. And that's what, essentially what we're talking about this evening is, is you have, you have been afforded the opportunity from the state to weigh in on this issue, whether or not you want to raise your taxes.
Alyssa?
Um, what if this doesn't pass? Then what?
I'm gonna look at the village board. I mean.
I mean, what are the, what are the options? We go get rid of our, um, police department and have to rely on the sheriff? We start letting people go?
That, that is, I mean, factually, I've certainly said that at meetings you've been at. An option I have to look at is, an option I have to look at is policing. An option I have to look at is, the reality is if we don't get the referendum passed, we're probably gonna be operating with those two EMTs.
And there is contracting with the county sheriff too, but our county.
We're not gonna be able to afford that. It's five hundred thousand dollars to get an officer.
And the county sheriff's department is under staff. That's why I'll be talking about.
And if it doesn't pass, like I said, we, as every city here at Burridge first, we've got some hard decisions to make. And we're not looking at, starting, looking at budget, starting to be close before, long before we want to.
Casey.
You know, and I think, you know, tell me if I'm wrong. Um, you know, as I understand, it's like, we need to, we are obligated to pay or have some type of fire EMT service. In some ways, it's due to the population size of our village, we don't have to have a police department. We, we, as, I've been living, I've been here with my wife and family for thirty-two years. As I understand from talking with people, of course, it's kind of like, this is something that we want. Because, because of, uh, the county where it takes so long for it to get over, we want some type of police.
People are not becoming police officers. The staffing to fill, they are at an extreme low. And what you have responding to your home, I've heard comments like, well, it's not twenty-four seven, so what does it matter? Our busiest times for calls for police are during the business hours, when the businesses are open, the schools open. And that's where Penny and I spend day after day after day. I will just simply caution you that it's a different type of policing than local policing and the sheriff doing what they have to do. They do their job. I will not say they don't. But understand what, if we have to make that move and you all choose to do that, that is, that's your right. And I will just tell you that there's a lot more that we do every day than those on Facebook that say, look, the chief's sitting in his office all day, realize. Penny and I, again, we are wrapped up well in the EMS and things like that. So yes, we would have to explore those options and ask the director of public safety, as the person that you all hired to come in here, I'm gonna give you my best guess, guess on what you can do with the department. But in the end, you all will have to make that decision and the referendum is not yes or no to policing. So we're clear on that. It's yes or no to the referendum that affects all of it. Your individual choices coming to the board at a later date, come budget time in October or September, October of twenty twenty-five will determine what you want to budget for in twenty twenty-six. And you all can look at that and make those decisions. Um, I would just caution you to do your research on what we offer, police, fire, EMS versus the communities around us.
I, Casey had mentioned, had answered the question that Tim was talking about, like what do we do? What do they do? Um, after April.
Yeah.
You had said at one of our meetings that some folks, some communities borrow, which only costs more money. They borrow year after year. They pay it off in a year, but you know, then you've got the added interest costs for sustaining their public safety. So.
It's not a recommended strategy.
Right.
Alyssa?
Um, I know that sometimes that you will get a call if the, someone in town requests the sheriff and the sheriff is not, is not close and they will ask the village police to attend to the situation.
So it's called mutual aid.
Okay.
If available, if available, we respond, um, mutual aid. And typically for us here in Palmyra, that is an officer engaged in something really bad and needs the closest available unit. Um, just like we call, we get a domestic in progress, a violent domestic, and it's one of us working. The county automatically responds. The time of that response varies.
And they're not available, we do reach out to.
We reach out to Eagle, Waukesha County. Um, that is a normal thing between police and fire, those mutual aids. What you will find is the more you give, the more you get.
Okay, you get as in dollars or you get as in more people helping you?
No, as in whether they'll respond and free up their car or whatever.
Typically, it's a, we respond until their officer can get there. Car deer accidents are different. I mean, they're not gonna, if we can handle a car deer accident for them and it's just outside, they'll send us for that. But it isn't like, here, you go do it. We're not coming. I just want to be clear on that. Most of the time, we're just there to.
Stabilize the scene.
Use the situation until they get there and then we may stand by for officer safety reasons, but they handle it.
Does that answer it?
Who pays for them? Who pays for you to go to the town instead of being in the village to protect the people?
The village.
The village.
The village.
We do. So it's not billable anywhere else?
No. So they're getting a good deal, aren't they?
The town's getting a good deal.
I think so too. Frank, listen to her.
Listening. You mind if I say something?
No, forget it.
So some of you might not know who I am, but I, Frank Sauter, I've lived here all my life. I am the town chair. Okay, and we do get, we're a customer of the village for fire and EMS protection. We enjoy that. We want to continue that. We want to look at Palmyra as a single. I do, when I, when I ran for the office, want to look at Palmyra as a single entity. I realized there's two entities. I realize there's two entities, but I grew up here all my life and I wanna look at that. And yes, if the county can't get their, uh, whether it be Lake Water PD, if they're not around, or Waukesha County, they're coming, that's just part of it, cause we wanna protect, the police wanna protect the, uh, the community as a whole. And that's what they're there for. Okay, we know that these services for the fire and EMS to the town, as they said, we are negotiating it this year. We know it's gonna go up some. Uh, we don't know how much. But when I sit and look at this room, two years under 30 years old. Now, I will tell you, I've got two steps. I've had two heart events. When I call for the ambulance, my wife does, and I've had to call them up to my house, not for that, but somebody had a bad accident and they were there in less than four and a half minutes. I wanna continue to see that. And as far as these wages go, $20 an hour. I'm in the insurance business and I work with a whole bunch of municipalities. And I can think of one right now. What's your job? Uh, EMT firefighter, $72,000 bucks a year. You're a paramedic firefighter, $85,000 bucks a year, straight. Plus benefits and the whole thing. $20 an hour. Okay, that's what I'm hearing. Now, most of you in here, uh, are older like I am. I'm quite as old as them. We all need those services. Okay, we're old enough to understand most of this. You mentioned Facebook. I don't even comment on some of that garbage that's on Facebook. I won't even get into it, cause it's so full of nonsense that isn't funny. I'm not gonna be drugging this up, it's so ridiculous. Okay? I wanna keep things positive for the township and the village and the working relationship. Sure, the village needs the town to help fund the whole thing, but we need your services. And I just, just before I came in here, running into somebody right across the street. A kid lives across the street, but the neighbor said, yeah, they're asking for two full-time EMT firefighters during the day. I told him, I said, we have that now, but we're, they're understaffed, except their truckers. So people, I said, why don't you come across the street for the meeting? They're not here. You know, they should, come learn something. Now, a lot of us in the room have been learning all of our life and that's why we care. We're, we're here and so on and so forth. Uh, I wanna continue the relationship with the village. And for your sake, that referendum needs to go through. Because you need the police protection. I was just up visiting with the county sheriff about four weeks ago. They're likely to have 50%. And he's wrong about eight deputies on the road. There's four cars in the county. They split it four ways. If there's a sergeant, he floats, correct me when I'm wrong, Penny, around the county. Okay? That's not very much when you look at the whole county. Now, that's what has to come when they're not around. I can remember an incident back in the day when I had a traffic stop, I used to be a cop here, where three of the guys ended up being arrested with firearms on them. Back in the day, you couldn't carry concealed. And the closest car from the county was coming from west to Fort Atkinson.
And that's when we were much heavier staff.
Oh, yeah, that's when everybody wanted a new job.
You love the police and fire. You had, you've got a lot of things you're thinking of in the village. Your public works and your schools, but the police and fire, they need everything. You guys had the biggest bargain in the world right now. But I, my question is, in the, in the whole picture, looking at the village, uh, are our dollars being utilized properly, not by you guys, but by other entities that form the tax structure of the village? And I guess I'm a little bit behind. Chief, I don't know, uh, when you say contract, is the police department completely separate from the village?
Police department's village only, so we don't control the town.
You were talking about when you were talking about your contract.
The fire EMS is a contract with the town to provide services of fire and EMS only to the town.
Okay, so, so the town takes that, what they're giving you for a contract, they're taking that into consideration with the rest of their budget, is that correct?
The year's an 800, front or 100? The short answer is the money from that contract goes to specific categories relating to fire and EMS services from the town.
My question is, uh, in order to be looked at properly, I think the people that are concerned need to be notified more than three weeks before the election. You have, we had, everybody, there's probably an awful lot of people that can't make it or have questions. Some excellent questions, questions that I couldn't think of, will be asked tonight. But you've got two and a half, three weeks before the election and you call the meeting. But your budget was made in August or September.
Um, I'd like to answer that one.
Yeah.
When we did do our budgets, our budgets were a little bit later this, our budgets were a little bit later this year, but we did not even start talking about a referendum, possibility of a referendum, until right before Christmas. We did not make this decision lightly to even ask for a referendum. So we voted, the village board voted on to go ahead and ask for a referendum on January 21st, I believe. It wasn't, it wasn't something that was decided on months ago.
Even that, January, January, if, if February 1st or so, you let everybody know, but you've given us two and a half, three weeks to ascertain if we believe that you should do it. And like I just said, that's, you guys, the whole village is the biggest bargain in the world of what you're paying your police officers and EMTs. That's not the question. The question is, in the grand scheme of things, uh, even if you had an actuarial study about what's, who's paying what for what and how many people in other departments. We don't know that. I have nothing to say, waiting that, uh, there aren't, that there's corners to be cut. I don't know that. I have no idea. But people need time to ascertain that or to ask the village board to look into every aspect of the budget. I assume you do. It's a hell of a job. But, but, but I think, uh, the answer's, you have to look at the village budget as a whole. Not what these people need, but as a whole. Because you consider it as part of your budget, once you've got, what kind of contract you've got locked. So, so two and a half, three weeks to have your questions asked and answered is the right.
So we have another meeting coming up on the 27th. But we also sent out 700 letters. We have 1,700 people in this village. Some of these people are not from the village. There's two or three of them that are not from the village right here.
Why didn't you send the letters over yet?
Let's see how many people we have on the 27th. They came out last week. I talked to, I, as board members, we've talked about this for months. Ever since the day we voted on the 21st.
21st of January.
We've talked to people. This is what we have to return.
And well, when it comes to, you know, you say it's a short, very short, like you say, it's very short. Sorry to interrupt. Sorry to interrupt. I know, I agree, it's a short window. Shh.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Can't hear him.
You know, I, I agree with you, it's a very short window. But we're obligated under state law that this is the only chance we get this year to ask our fellow taxpayers for this one. I know, it's like, well, we don't do 2026 budget, which is, that's what we're talking about for next year, until August, September, but this is the only chance we get to do it, unfortunately. And if this was a presidential election year, maybe we could do a referendum and go referendum. But it, it comes down to the state laws. It's one of those things where we're stuck behind decisions that are made by forms of government that are higher than us. And we have to abide by those.
Again.
And, but while we go through with the budget every year, hitting at everybody, every department's and, you know, I know, you know, we try to save a little bit of money to bring over for next year, whether it's DPW, whether it's police and fire, whether it's Lori's department. You know, we, we try to, I mean, we try to save a little bit of money, just like every one of us. It's like, oh, if we got a little extra rebate check from the IRS, then let's hopefully try to not spend that and save it for, you know, a rainy day. As what we've had in the presentation here, it's like, well, we've been whittling, we get our rainy days on every single year because expenses, just like everybody, you know, we all know. You know, I, I look at, at the end of every year, I'm just saying for my household, I look at all of my bills, just out of curiosity, how much I spent all year or paid it for a year. My, we have spectrum. I paid more to spectrum than I did for property taxes this year, this past year. It's like, holy crap. And I, I'm not, pardon my French, cause this is kinda like, you know, that's why, you know, it's just, you know, expenses just get so high. It's like, you know.
It's pretty very hard to, it's pretty very hard to, you know, I'm not, I'm not questioning, uh, I just, but the point of my conversation was that if you knew in February that this was coming about, it should, it should have been, the letter should have gone out in February, not in middle of March.
Can I just say something, Gary? I, I totally agree with you. Thank you. Um, I'm not for or against the referendum either way, but I worked here almost 25 years. Budget time is, to me, is the most important time that all of you should be coming and paying attention to what goes on because it's your money. Zero people come to budget meetings. They don't come to the budget hearing. It's posted on the website, it's posted around town. It's the most important time of the year. It's the biggest check you're gonna write to anybody, but nobody comes for input. And when people come to my office and say our taxes are too high, I don't disagree, but I ask them for suggestions. Do you wanna cut the fire department? Do you wanna cut the police department? Do you want us to help us? No, no, I don't want that, I don't want that. Well, what do you want? Well, I don't know. So I understand that the letters went out at a short notice, but if, if you would have been coming to meetings during budget time, you would have seen how much trouble we were in at budget time. And this isn't a surprise. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just wanna interject on what Gary was trying to say. You guys had a budget, when did you decide to budget?
December. Well, that's, that's 2025. We're talking about a referendum for 2026.
I understand. When did you decide what you needed for 26?
We started, so that you understand.
Sorry, when did you decide?
We decided for 2026.
This is an estimate. No, no, no. He, he asked when we decided on this year's budget.
I'm trying to get to the point of this.
Does sound.
You knew you needed the money for fire, police before January 1st. Why weren't the letters sent out January 2nd? And having more than one meeting for this? No?
We wouldn't do anything about it at that point. I mean, we had done the taxes for the current year, for 25.
I think, I think I know what you're asking. So we realized that we needed more money. The village board had to make a decision, were they going to look at a referendum? So they had to make that decision first. Then the editor group had to come in and give projections on what the taxes would be for different amounts of referendum. Then they had to decide what amount were we gonna pay? And that's when we came up with the, this is what we think we're gonna need for 2026. Gave that to the village and then that's when they decided, okay, we think we're gonna, we're gonna ask for the 350. Then he had to do projections again. So it isn't, uh, I wanna buy this soda today and I go buy.
That was done over several meetings too.
But that is what took the time.
Go ahead and finish your question.
I believe it should have been four weeks ago that we're notified of having a meeting the next week when we did this one. You know, I knew it's March and you knew in December what you were gonna need. I know you had to go through it.
No, no. We didn't know until January 21st. January 21st is when we knew that we were going to ask for a referendum and we knew what amount after looking at the calculations of stuff. And I, I do agree, we could have, we could have sent out the letters sooner. We could have sent out the letters sooner.
With no information, cause we haven't at that point.
And in relation to, uh, notice that are posted, uh, in the post office and around, realistically, that is not a communication to your village. It's a, it's a, it's a fair attempt, it's necessary, but all those postings that you put around town, that's not proper communication to the village.
No, but, but we have our meetings the first and third Monday every month. So whether you see those postings or not, if it's, if what's going on in the village is important to you, mark it on your calendar, that will be a priority.
See, when you get proper communication, you can see by people that are here, it's important to us.
So can I, can I ask you a question? What, what would you consider proper communication?
When any major, uh, tax, special taxes, any major tax, uh, notification gets you come up right away.
How?
Otherwise, otherwise, we collected, we collected each and every one of you to make decisions for us and we have to stand by that, cause we, we elected you. But we didn't elect a, a, a board, uh, not to communicate properly. Once you know what's happening, you should know.
How? What, what, how?
You just didn't.
I think there's plenty of screens and information. Going to get information out.
I'm just trying to find out what he considers.
There's all kinds of social media, it's easy now. Super easy to get information out.
Not everybody's got computers and.
Well, exactly.
The water, the water.
I didn't have a question.
Is that the water, is that the water that was raised in the game?
If you get the enterprise a chance or the Calmy paper, that, it was in there, I know. I mean, I don't know what to do, because I don't do Facebook, but you know, you can.
You did it, you did it on two occasions. The water, the water went out, the water, it was great. Uh, and a lot of it went out, which was great. Very late. And there's, uh, there's very educated people in our village, uh, they have the opportunity to look into where you might be able to come over to money. I didn't say you could, I said they might be able to. They deserve the opportunity to look.
Hey, Lori, quick question, and maybe we might be able to do this, maybe not, I don't know, in village board, maybe, possibly. When we go invoke, we have like a side table where people can like, tell us like how they wanna be communicated with. Email, write your email address. Mailing, physical, writing it down. Facebook, you know, and then that way we know what the contact information is and how we market contact is. Well, you can sign up for a village email. I get the town of Palmyra's email. I know, but some, but sometimes people don't have email or whatever, so.
Did you get your letter?
I did, yes. But sometimes there might not be a letter.
Why are you acting so defensive all night?
Defensive?
Yes, you have, and I can very defensive.
What? We can't, we can't do this. This is a justice. It would be cost prohibitive to try to write letters to everybody and, you know, not only costs, but personnel and everything else. Um, you know, that's just not, like, this is huge, so yes, we did. But, um, you know, to, the meetings are publicly announced. Um, and you can subscribe through email to get those agendas sent to you. Um, you know, otherwise show up, first and third Mondays of the month, there's always something going on down there.
So in January, everybody come to village board meeting, now they've been told this meeting is this week?
Well, no, no.
Okay, then what did you?
Well, we didn't know, we had to have a resolution posted.
I'm saying, as you guys knew, we need the $350,000 back in December. Why didn't you start working on this sooner?
We did not. If I could clarify, listen, Penny, I understand you're paying, but let me just be blunt. In August, I started preparing the 2025 budget. Those meetings were public. They were announced, they were on the agenda, they're on the website, people commented on Facebook. Each of those meetings was done. In December, the budget was adopted, significant, for 2025, significant cuts were made. So you gotta go to this year. It'll make sense to you, just bear with me. The twenty-twenty-five budget was adopted. When we looked at it in December, the final adopted budget and the cuts, we knew as a public safety department that twenty-twenty-six, which is what we're talking about for the referendum, was, was gonna be problematic because of all the cuts that caused. In January, that information was presented at a board meeting. The referendum process and, and from mailers, maybe you can explain more, is not as simple as, yep, we look like we need a referendum. There was three different meetings that had to be held to write the question. I know that sounds silly, but that question that gets posted is a question that falls into criteria under statute. That question got posted, then it had to be voted on, then an amount had to be decided. Those were all at public meetings. Then the notice got posted as soon as we could, and we put it out there and we scheduled two meetings. I agree with you, sir, that I wish we had till November to decide this. Here's my problem with that. Let's just say November existed, the next election. My budget is due. I start presenting that budget as I indicated in August. We would have not been able to present to you the facts in, for a November meeting, so you, we had to back it up. It had to be rushed. You're right, it's quick. Um, the village has now gone online for the meetings. They're, they're, they're now videoed so people can get those meetings. You haven't been able to see for quite a while. Um, and that was a request. It's frustrating, but that is the timeline that's required under the statute, and it sucks for all of us because in the end, I gotta give you fire and police and EMS, and I just know when I need to get that to honestly be able to provide those services. And it sucks. My taxes went up sixteen-hundred dollars more this year where I live, and it sucks, and that was for fire trucks and police cars. But when I go to your calls, I don't wanna go to those calls as the chief said, where I'm going there with two people in a fire truck because you think you have a fire truck and we're gonna stand there and watch things happen. So, I, as the director, went to the board and had to be honest with everybody, and I'm hated for it, to tell you how bad it is. And that's the truth why you're here tonight, is we either do this or those other options. You're free to come to the meetings and, and go over that, decide what's gonna get cut or what's gonna get added, and that's your right, and I praise you for it. Um, but in the end, this is coming down to a question that's just, in my opinion, and it's just mine. Comes down to lives, and what I can provide you for you as the public safety director, and those, and, and that's what this is. Um, I will do my best to push anything in the future to the board even faster, if that helps. You have my word.
So, if the referendum is passed, are you saying that the, like, the extra officer that we were talking about, if this was gonna go up to as far as hiring another officer, is that not going to happen until twenty-twenty-six?
Correct, because you would still adhere to the referendum, then the board would have to go through the budgeting process for twenty-twenty-six. Again, public meetings, I strongly urge all of you to go to them, and that's where they can look at that referendum money. What we've proposed, I can certainly put that information out, that's public to the village board. But in the end, that budget for twenty-twenty-six then has to be decided, uh, finally, because we don't know what's gonna happen in twenty-twenty-five. That could create, you know, our fire truck could go on.
So, we, we would be interviewing for the position, but we would not, it would not be funded until twenty-twenty-six.
So, for the rest of twenty-twenty-five, we're down to you and Penny for us?
And one other full-timer that just came back, and we have three part-timers that are filling in hours, um, and the third one coming back.
Okay, well, see, the thing, the thing is that this whole letter has created this, this hubbub in the, in the village. Anywhere you go, you can hear people quacking about it, you know, you go to a restaurant, wherever you wanna go, you can run into a neighbor, whatever, and they're all thinking the same thing, that if we vote on this and we, and this three-hundred-thousand plus is passed, we're gonna have a great fire, or a great police department again. We've been here for forty-five years, and we've seen lots and lots of changes in the police department in all of those years. I can tell you that right now is the worst that we've ever seen it because you're down to two people. Our street in front of us has turned into a racetrack. Down town has turned into a racetrack because there's nobody available to police the town because it's just you two, okay? But people are expecting that if this is passed, all of a sudden, there's gonna be a band-aid put on this and it's gonna get better. And I'm not so sure that that's what people.
So, I would love to sit down with you and anyone that wants to, I've made this invitation, and tell you what you had before and show you the call volume, the calls that we're investigating, the traffic that we're doing, the fact that you had public safety officers, what was given to you, but those public safety officers ninety percent of the time were firefighters. And you had officers not on the street for hours. I'm giving you ten hours a day right now. You have officers on the street, and yes, we want to increase that, but we've also had to provide fire. So, it is, I, it's just gonna tell you, in my eyes, it's a misconception that what you're saying. The other part is, folks, pick up the phone. I, I know that sounds horrible, but I read Facebook all the time and go, there was a strange vehicle on my street. And I will, I don't like Facebook. It's full of rumors. Periodically, I would respond and I'll say, did you call the police? Because I can sit in that, that police department, I can drive to Main Street, I can drive wherever. If you can tell me where the crime is, I'll go there. I, I love to arrest bad guys. But it's, it's not that simple. But we are short-staffed right now because we had to cut to meet the other needs and expenses that came up. But, um, it's, it's, it's not worse than it's been. I'm, I'll show you the call line, the case reports, and what we've been doing.
Okay, what, I don't, I don't, maybe I didn't use the right, right phrase, but the coverage that we see, the presence, the physical presence of the police in Calmy, we don't see like we used to. We used to see squads all the time, back and forth, on our streets, pulling people over for speeding or whatever, and we don't see that anymore.
The numbers just show differently. So, you know, I can just tell you factually, when you saw, when you saw a person that was a PSO going to a fire call and you thought it was a squad, a patrol, or zero, a police guard, was the guy going to the fire calls and the EMT calls that did both. It wasn't your number of traffic stops and areas. We, we do have less right now because we're down to us. Yeah, we're down to two, and we're trying to bring that up, but I had to cut for twenty-twenty-four because when I got dealt with a budget I didn't plan for in the end of twenty-twenty-three when I came on. We're trying to build that back so your fire and EMS comes first because those lives were even in worse shape. So, but I would tell you, if you have troubled areas, my, that's what we have a phone for so we can get out. We do what's called selective traffic enforcement, where we put our officers in areas that are, uh, told to be problematic. Um, our officers sit out there and we record what we see, uh, what we can do, and that's all I can suggest to you if you have a problem area. I'm just gonna tell you, I gotta flat-out disagree with people that think the services have been less because it's been more in both areas than what you saw, minus, yes, the less personnel to a degree.
Regarding your referendum, is that a, it's a one-time shot or is it continuing?
I, I, I understand. And so, no, the village has.
I said it before, but I didn't understand.
Yeah, so what this would be is if it's approved, that move, that three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is added to your levy, moves forward continuously, ongoing. Yeah, if it's for some reason not approved, if it's voted, if it's voted down, the village does have the option to, again, ask you for a referendum at some point in time. Not this year, because as we were talking about earlier with the timeline, there's only two elections this year in, in twenty, uh, twenty-five. Next year, there'll be four, so there's a possibility the village couldn't ask that if they wanted to at some point in the future. That's up to the board, whether or not they just wanna pursue that or, or not.
Kylie's question. Okay, I, now I have two questions. Oh. One, I'll take it, yeah. The three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, I'm sorry, that, that is for twenty-twenty-six. And you say it goes every year. It's that three, it doesn't, in the next year, it doesn't become seven-hundred?
No, 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 no.
It's three-hundred-and-fifty, consistent each year.
Yeah, it raises the stuff. It's not, yeah, it's not.
It's a Q, it's not a Q.
It's not Q.
Okay, the second question is, uh, that with the increase of the two EMS and the one police officer, we, based on the situation in the community at the time, you are still gonna need to depend on Jefferson and other, other communities to assist, right? Depending on the situation.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll have times where if we get a, what we call a hot call, for lack of a better way to phrase it. We have to get a deputy for backup because on those days, one officer may be working and we, we call for backup from them for safety reasons.
Okay, so even with this increase, we are not gonna be a twenty-four-seven service.
For fire, and, yeah, fire EMS, yes, for policing at this point. Um, if I got everything that we asked for, meaning that second officer, hopefully some of our part-time officers will step up and work more officers. But I, as I stated at the beginning, I'm not gonna promise you what I'm gonna get because I can't get officers to work here.
Right, right, okay.
Coming for this rate.
Thank you.
We do, I mean, through the county taxes, we do pay our services, Jefferson County as well.
Right, right, sir.
So, through, yeah, through your county taxes, the county levy, that pays for the sheriff's department, and that pays for all the other county services to pay to.
Is there, is there any state or federal grants or anything that, what can they help with? There are a lot of them. Very big fire trucks, very, very new and nice-looking trucks that.
I'll let Mike speak to the ground.
Yeah.
At least there are grants.
There are a lot of, I assume they were just because of the society.
The grants are not there. They're coming back, and I hope we can get them, but they're usually matching. If we hire someone, they'll pay for some.
Seems like there's a lot of fancy equipment that a smaller town might not need.
Right, and I'll let Mike touch on the fire in a second.
Five, every grant that we know that's out there, we, we just, uh, did obtain a DNR grant this year for fifty-seven. No, it's, it's a fifty-fifty grant, so we'll both have it together. Uh, but with the, going forward, there are a lot of us currently, uh, there's a lot of cutting going on. Uh, we've just got a mass email saying that, uh, some of the, the grants that we generally apply for have been stalled right now, so we don't know what's gonna happen in the future here, but, um.
I believe most of the grants, the grants are on pause right now until President Trump puts in orders.
There was a lot of wasteful spending, so I think.
Not that, that's, we do apply for any grant that we know is out there that might, whether we get it or not, that's, you know, everybody wants the money, so it just depends on the outcome of the draft for it this year.
And both pool vests are half-funded by the Department of Justice grant that we apply for every year, even if we don't need them because the grant money sits there, we do get the grant, and we, we normally at least half of the pool vests pay for a year. They have to be replaced every five years.
Well, and you guys have recycled them, right? So, it's like you buy like two vests one year and then one vest another year. That's, that's the life cycle of them or whatever. It's not like you buy five vests right out of the box.
No, no, and like I said, we're like Paul Vouts expired a couple of years ago where he wasn't picking up a lot of hours, so he just went over his, we have half the money up and from a grant two years ago, so hold me on the year, because you'll have that. But, you know, the money's been sitting there waiting for July, and so that grant pays for half of the class. And yes, we apply every year because they're being rotated through.
Just like the new trucks, like the ladder truck and the ambulance, like, what's the budget for those? Is it gotta be new all the time or?
Our new ambulance just was last, was for twenty-six, but, uh, it's about four-hundred dollars an hour. Just the cot alone for, it's about forty. Um, a new fire engine is about a million, and it costs, it takes about four years to build. That's the lead time that they're on right now. A tender that carries the water is about half a million. Um, nothing's been cheaper, and it's taken longer and longer to build, so.
How, at what point do you say, yeah, we need this?
Twenty years on, twenty-plus years on our engine, and the tender, the ambulance, one of them is not used.
We just, um, the rest check, um, and the TV, over fire, because ours is, they're on park, it's about seventy thousand bucks.
And I could kinda add just a little bit too. From a budgeting standpoint, with equipment, you generally, we're talking here in operational levy. And I say operation, and I know the chief mentioned kind of like operation, the personnel, I call operations, it's the whole thing. So, it's your day-to-day things. You pay employees, you have equipment that you, you need to bring in, and I saw, tastes like small equipment. Large equipment like a fire engine, a ladder truck, an ambulance, those tend to be large purchases, and oftentimes you'll debt finance for that, meaning that you'll take out a loan, you'll do some sort of borrowing in order to pay for that because it's a long-lived asset. So, usually a long-lived asset's anything more than ten years, and an ambulance is usually in service ten years and probably five years or so. A truck, ladder truck, twenty, towards twenty-five, or an engine, twenty years, roughly. So, those things are not really, uh, wouldn't be accounted for in this because you're talking about, you know, what the, we talked about that debt that the village has, that we, on, on the village.
However, those operational costs, you just answered your question, so in the last year, two-hundred-thousand dollars of unexpected expenses on our equipment and rigs that we had to repair, that was not budgeted. We robbed Peter from, to pay Paul in line items and moved things around, and the leaf blowing was done by a firefighter getting up on the roof in a gutter, rather than a gutter cleaning service. Uh, those adjustments are all having to be made because all those things are.
And that's far as, that ongoing operational, like, when stuff breaks down, that comes out of the operational budget, right? That's not a, your debt service. So, and the longer you have an asset, the longer you have an engine. I worked for the village of Sussex and we had a, um, you know, we had a ladder truck that was refurbished, and we couldn't get it, um, to be, um, we couldn't get it recertified because it, it continuously broke down. Yeah, it wouldn't pass inspection. So, you know, you, you, you try and stretch things out and repair things, but sometimes it just, this doesn't, you can't use it anymore.
Lori, you wanna just mention how to subscribe to get the meeting?
You can go to the village website. There's a contact us form, and then I think right in that section, I don't know what the term is, but if anybody's interested, you may call. Um, you can say that you wanna be a subscriber, and so when agenda, when I post agenda, meetings and meeting agendas, there'll be a notification that goes out to your email address that you should be a member.
The last board meeting you had, when is that put on YouTube or what are you?
So, the last meeting, uh, we had an old video camera for years and years, and that broke down probably six or eight months ago. I used to put that on YouTube. We just got new, through a donation from a resident in the village, we bought a new camera system, so we do, uh, recordings of the meetings. So, the last meeting, if you go to our website, to the March third, I think it was meeting, March second or third.
So, under the agenda minutes?
Yeah, if you go under the agenda, meeting minutes, and there'll be the minutes, once they're approved, I post them, and there's a link down below that you can watch the meeting, and that should be there the next day after the meeting.
So, within a week?
Or less. So, the last meeting is there now. It was there the next morning.
It wasn't there the next morning.
It was there the next morning, yeah.
It's there before the next meeting?
Yes.
No, it was there, it's, it's there the, uh, day after the meeting is what she said.
Yes, yes.
It's not two weeks later, it's there the day.
No, it passed, that's.
Yeah.
No, because we haven't had a camera system, so there was no video recordings.
But the minutes have been posted.
The minutes are always posted, yeah.
Okay, so you ask us to be there meetings. Some people can't make it, so they wanna watch YouTube. And if it's after the next meeting, like it had been in the past, you guys had, you know, obviously that video was, when I watched it, you already had another meeting since that.
When, when the old camera was around, I would record the meeting minutes, and they would be on the website within a week. So, that would be before the next meeting was scheduled. Yeah, they're on the website, not YouTube.
Yeah.
Meeting here.
There at the village hall.
We only have.
Get their own.
And if we had bigger, bigger crowd, then we would probably have it in, uh, Genesee. Kinda pushing the time here, but.
Okay, we are. So, thank you, everybody. Um.
Now, you were gonna let everybody know, did anybody want to copy the slides? Call village hall and you can get a copy of them.
If you or any of your neighbors have any other questions, feel free to contact us, send them to Lori. Yes, we have that too.
And all of our, um, all of our email addresses, for the village board, are all on the village website, and I'm more than happy to answer questions what a ton, all of us are happy to answer questions about the time. Or we'll turn to somebody else to be able to answer those questions.
Anybody would like an application, they're up here.
Okay, so am I.
So am I.